Row call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Please, uh, join us in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three is agenda received as proposed or as amended. We're going to add a resolution under nine K, right after nine K, and it deals with the canvas. Uh, the board got a letter from Grant here today, so we get to that point. We'll have, uh, Grant go over the details. Is that right, Grant?
Yeah, unless you want me to go over them now.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be a good idea to explain to the public and to the people present, uh, what we're doing at, uh, at this additional item.
Okay, that's fine. Let's go ahead and give a little bit and then we'll approve the agenda.
Okay, um, I sent a, an email to the board just before the meeting, so I'm sure most of you haven't had a chance to read it, but it says that due to a miscommunication, the second tier canvas for the November 5th city school elections wasn't put on the agenda for today's meeting. The second tier canvas is where the Board of Supervisors certifies out of county votes for cities and school districts that partially lie in Blackhawk County but whose elections are controlled by other counties. This law, uh, the law says that this canvas is to be completed on the second Monday or Tuesday after the election, so that would be either yesterday or today. So, we didn't get it on the agenda and, um, the Iowa Open Meetings Law calls for a 24-hour notice for meeting agendas unless for good cause such notice is impossible or impractical. And it says, "When it is necessary to hold a meeting on less than 24 hours' notice, the nature of the good cause justifying that departure from the normal requirements shall be stated in the minutes." So, I propose to put the following language in the minutes at the outset of the item regarding the canvas. Due to a miscommunication, the second tier canvas for the November 5th city school elections was left off the original agenda for the November 19th agenda. The Iowa law requires that this canvas be conducted on the second Monday or Tuesday after the day of the election, which in this case would be November 18th or 19th. In order to comply with the applicable statute, the Board of Supervisors invoked Section 21.4 of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, which allows the board to address an agenda item without the required 24-hour notice, provided that the nature of the good cause justifying that departure from the normal requirements shall be stated in the minutes. So, if that's agreeable to the board, that's what we'll do. And Pete, do you have any other comments?
No, yeah, I think that, that sums it up correctly and properly.
Board, any questions before we approve the agenda? Okay, then, do you have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item two is public comments. Anybody want to speak to the board this time? It's not a agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to years of service award to employees with 20 or more years of service.
Sorry, I didn't know we had that on the agenda. Is it possible that was placed on the agenda in error?
Well, I did sign some, so I don't know if they made their way in here. James, you want to double check if, with Dana, if they're supposed to be done today?
That's usually the first week of the month that we have those, so I wonder if that got on in there. Maybe that's the one that got on instead of the one we were supposed to have about the.
Ah, that's a good cover, Grant. And you're probably correct. We'll just let her double check, because I did sign some awards.
Okay.
That was placed on there in error.
Okay, very good. So, we will move on to item four, claims and payments. Resolution A, James?
All right. Uh, claims came out to 480, 481,888.65. Uh, some of the big-ticket items, uh, you were looking at, uh, the elections total came into 60,543.05. Uh, secondary roads, 176,275.48. Uh, and then, the only other big-ticket item that I kind of saw was, um, a medical service for NAF Care in the Sheriff's Department for 108,736.10. But everything else looked normal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Row call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item five, receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. I wanted to remind you that this evening we are having a public information meeting at 6:00 PM at the Dunkerton City Library, and this will be to discuss the, the East Bennington Road Bridge, that as you recall, we closed that permanently in the fall of 2017. Uh, it's just been sitting there, so that is again this evening at 6:00 PM tonight, Dunkerton City, the Public Library. We did send out approximately 45 letters to the surrounding residents. It's on our Facebook site and it's on Twitter. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Do you know if that was posted for a meeting and more than two supervisors show up?
I don't believe we did post that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Uh, just wanted to remind you of two projects that are in our FY '20 capital budget, uh, the two large projects. One was, uh, the quarter of a mile of bike trail that we will be redoing. We call it the 13.75 mile project. Um, that bid was led in October, and, uh, it was slightly over the estimated cost, but it, uh, it wasn't significant and that cost is covered. Uh, contracts have been signed and that will be started in the spring when they can start working again. Uh, the big one is today. The Wolf Creek Bridge letting is today, and, um, just wanted to let you know in case you get phone calls, we're already getting phone calls. Everybody wants to know how that came in. It's a DOT letting. We won't know until they tell us, so we don't expect it to hear anything at the earliest. It would be late this week. We expect it more to be along the lines of early next week, um, before we know where it is. Uh, the other thing, uh, I, I've spoken to a lot of different groups over this timeframe, and, uh, we talked about $854,000, but the one thing we wanted to make clear again is that that's the total project cost. The bid we're looking for today, we need that to come in at around $610,000 to be, uh, on the estimated cost and, and stay within our budget. So, uh, that's misconceived by, uh, a lot of people, and, um, so, you know, if I have to walk back in here and say the, the bid was 850,000, um, we're over by a lot. So, anyway, we're, uh, we're kind of nervously, anxiously waiting to see how that comes in, but that's today, and we will let you know just as soon as we get those numbers. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on to minutes approved for November the 12th, 2019.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven is a consent agenda. Have you made a single resolution?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, row call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item eight is contracted agreements. Resolution 20, agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Raymond for snow plowing, ice control services at a cost of $1,000 per year, shoulder maintenance, a cost of $300 every other year. Uh, term January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2021 be approved and direct to Chair. Kathy?
Yes, this is our, a renewal of an agreement we, that we have with the City of Raymond. They have already approved it. The inspection costs are, those are pretty easy for us to quantify, as are the, the shoulder maintenance where we're charging them are our actual costs. Uh, the one cost that we have looked at, but it is very difficult to get a handle on how much we estimate we're going to be plowing through the City of Raymond for the upcoming, you know, for the next few years. So, we feel that this is most likely an adequate amount. Uh, we have had a heavy snow, snow year last year. If we continue to have heavy snow years, we can reassess this when it expires. It'll come back up for renewal, I think, in, uh, in 20, at the end of the year in 2021. So, we would have a chance to readjust it if we feel that $1,000 is not enough money.
How long has we, have we had this agreement with them?
We've had an on-again, off-again relationship with the City of Raymond. We, for a number of years, we, we were doing the work through the town. We weren't charging them at all, if I recall. Um, then they became unhappy with what, the work we were doing in the community, so we stopped plowing at all, and then three or four years ago, we renewed our agreement with them and began charging them this dollar amount.
The, uh, inspection, um, bridge inspection cost, do we do that or does somebody else do it?
No, we do that ourselves. We are, that's part of the federal bridge inspection requirements. They do have that large box covert on Raymond Road, and that, that's the structure that we inspect for them, and we're the project manager for them, for the, the state of Iowa requires us to input that into the bridge management system. So, there's some paperwork that goes along with that, but we're pretty able to get a handle on those costs or know what those costs are for inspection.
This agreement will run for two years?
Yes.
And we haven't had any increases. Our increases cost every year. Your labor goes up every year. Your equipment goes up every year, and don't you think we should keep up with this cost, too?
We should. We, we could raise it every year. We probably, perhaps this winter, maybe we could try and track how much time we are spending plowing in Raymond. It's, it's approximately two miles, you know, Raymond Road as we go through Raymond and then, and then Dubuque Road. So, maybe we could keep a better idea of how many times we are out plowing in that district, and, you know, it probably takes 10 minutes to plow that portion.
Yeah, I understand. I, I'm just saying your cost goes up every year. How come we don't share it with another, uh, government entity? It's a taxing body, just like Blackhawk County.
And I think that's a fair question. I'm just not sure if the $1,000 is already overcharging. I, I don't know. This seemed like a, at the time, two years ago, this seemed like a inadequate amount. We, we can try and give a better handle on our costs this winter, the next two winters.
I think you just answered my question. I just wanted to verify. This is just Raymond Road and Dubuque Road.
Right. It's, it's just those two miles. We don't do the city streets or anything else in the community.
I realize that's difficult to do, to, excuse me, but, um, to track that kind of recording when you're busy out doing the snow, but I think that would be helpful if you can take a look at it.
If it's two miles, you ought to have an approximation of how long it takes.
Well, how many times we have to do it?
You know, I, you know, that, that could be a key to this, but regardless, how many times or not any more, not any less, our cost goes up every year. Um, most of our people are bargaining. The cost goes up there. We buy new equipment every year, fuel and everything, so, you know, I'm not saying a huge cost here, but I think there should be a modest cost to show the reflection of what it cost us to do it, because obviously it costs you more to do it this year than it did three years ago or four years ago, because your labor cost is higher.
Correct, but if we only have to plow once this coming winter, then the costs.
Or maybe you do it 50 times.
Right, that's what we don't, it's hard to.
I mean, that is always going to not be constant.
Right.
Labor is, because it goes up every year.
They must have thought it was a good deal to come back to us, too. You know, they, they went away from us for a while. Now all of a sudden they're back within the last few years.
Yes, I, I agree that we are certainly helping them out by taking care of the main, the main routes through Raymond.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board? Kathy, anything? Okay, do you have motion on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, row call, please.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
No. Okay, moving on to item nine, uh, motion personnel reg for office specialist full-time, starting no sooner than January the 6th. This is for the County Treasurer's Office. I believe this is a backfill for retirement. Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion that the travel request amended by Deb Bunger, not Berger, uh, Human Resource Director be approved as for $2,250 to attend the National Plu, Public Employer Relations, Labor Relations in Austin, Texas in April 26th through the 29th. Deb, did you want to add anything to that?
Morning, Board. Debbie Bunger, HR Director. This is an annual conference for the National PELRA. It's strictly for public employers. It's, uh, really hu, it's a pretty big attendance. Um, actually, the hotel is actually already sold out, so there's a couple sistering hotels that, um, people are starting to, to utilize, but it is a really valuable training. They bring in top-tier speakers for three days of, of really good training. Um, I feel like it's actually been a benefit for the county. It's, it is a budgeted expense.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, it's a motion at the holiday schedule for Blackhawk County offices for 2020 be approved as follows. List the different dates there.
So moved.
Second.
We do this annually, so is there any other questions on this one?
We did just make a few aesthetic changes, so it looks a little, hopefully it's a little easier for people to read this year.
Good. Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item D is a resolution of the policy revision to building grounds, updating definition of service animals be approved and recommended by the Policy Review Committee. Deb?
And this again was, uh, something we just recently actually added service animals to this policy, and I apologize, when I was researching it, I did not see the, the updated law. It's actually not posted online yet. Uh, I had Mike trying to review it, because I heard through a networking, uh, meeting that I was at that the law had changed, but I still couldn't find it when I tried to research it. So, you have to have a subscription, basically, to Westlaw to be able to see the actual change. The good news is, is that Iowa law now mirrors the federal law, so it just, it's just the dog and the mini horse. Uh, the one difference is still that it does allow for the animal training.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
Okay, any other questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Row call, please.
White.
Yep.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka. Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item E, a resolution of policy revision to the drug and alcohol policy, adding the new DOT requirements, uh, and removing country view.
So moved.
Second.
So, this is the DOT has decided, and it, it just kind of took a lot of people by surprise, but they've started what they're calling a clearinghouse. So, information that we've been collecting manually by paper in the past is going to be basically going online. They're not going backwards and adding information. Still, starting January 6th, they'll be, um, doing all this electronically. Um, we have to have consent from employees to check their records. If they don't give us consent, then we can't allow them to do safety-sensitive jobs. Uh, the intent is really to keep our highway safe and make sure that things aren't falling through the cracks.
Sure. Okay, Board, any other questions? Okay, row call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes, and we have another revision, uh, Resolution F. Deb?
Yep, this is, um, the new silica standard that came out a few years ago. Uh, it's been a work in progress. We've had quite a bit of training with, um, Bill Trammell when he was our consultant, our paid consultant. We've also met with, um, the free consulting side of OSHA. All the department heads here that it affects have done a really great job in reviewing the, what they, the work that they do that creates silica dust and taken the appropriate measures to make sure people are safe. So, this is by OSHA requirements. We are supposed to adopt a, a written program, so this satisfies that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Row call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Item G is a resolution tax sale certificate assignment for a vacant lot located with those numbers, parcel 9011-29-202-037 located in Dunkerton. This is Iowa Code 446.31.
So moved.
Second.
Rita?
Morning, Board. Rita Schmidt, Treasurer. This is a property that, um, is connected to a piece of, uh, ground and building that one of our private buyers had taken tax L.D. to. They thought this piece was included in that parcel that they had gotten through that, uh, process. It's kind of an entrance. Uh, it's not a, a plot of ground or anything that, uh, they, it's, it looks like a driveway, but I've never been out there to see it actually if it was considered a driveway. So, they had not, uh, discovered, they had discovered that, they had missed that parcel, and so now they're asking for the assignment of that, uh, certificate. The taxes that were delinquent on that that have accrued since 2007 are $1,421. The principal or actual tax is 524. Uh, they're willing to, uh, pay the 250 as a compromise and the $10 certificate fee from, uh, Blackhawk to them. Uh, we have no interest in it. It's, uh, just a small piece of ground and it's an entrance into their property, and they do keep their taxes up. They are an investor that, uh, does, um, due diligence that way.
Okay. Any questions, Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, we already have a motion.
Okay, row call, please.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item H, resolution compromise offer amount of $260 by ACC 18 LLC on the taxes owed for the parcel listed.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this resolution? Row call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item I is a resolution of Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors hereby petition the Governor of Iowa and State Legislature to address and, and continue improvements to the failings and shortcomings of the mental health system in Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
I want to add just one line, if we could, um, just a line of whereas understaffing has led to dangerous conditions for employees and residents alike. If that be agreeable.
I agree.
Hey, can we add something?
I was mentioning to Dan as we came in, I was hoping to have some discussion on this, not just resolve, um, but into resolution form for various reasons.
It's been short-staffed for years.
Yeah, the independents.
Just started.
But Dan's comments, I thought last week were, um, very direct and specific to what we want to do for the, the state's downfall or what we expect them, their shortfalls, I guess. And the things that we listed here, I know it says increase the number of mental health beds in state facilities. There's been several, several conversations with the state on that particular statement, and it's, and they've always come back to us and said that they have a number of beds still open and available, and so I guess I'd like that maybe to consider having the right number of beds and the right kind of beds so that we're addressing the needs of people with mental illness across the board and the bed, you know, not one bed suits all the individuals that are suffering with mental illness. So, I just thought if there was something that we could say to that effect, because I'm sure the state's argument would be the same. We have numbers of beds available, and so, um, we don't need to address that, and I think our arguments countered that. Also, the providing for short-term care facilities where mentally ill individuals, you mentioned about not being the jail or the mental health, um, institute, and the access centers, I think they would feel that the access centers that they approved somewhat last year would be addressing that. Not that we don't need more, but, um, I would like to even strengthen that comment, I guess, a little bit more, that all three of them probably related to the state being a partner with counties and the regions for funding. Funding is obviously where the downfall is in some of this, and it's all falling to the counties to pick up slack in that, and that's part of what our arguments have been, is the state needs to share in that funding. So, I didn't know if there'd be some discussion from the, from other supervisors. I'd certainly like to hear that, but I did want to ask you specifically, too, you mentioned about providing for training for law enforcement officials, and I think, and I could be incorrect in this, in that crisis intervention training that's been conducted in Blackhawk County, and maybe you have some officers that have been in that. Is there something particular you'd like us to mention for, um, specific training or how to assist?
You want to table this, see if it's got a whole different idea?
No, I, I guess I want input from the supervisors, I guess.
Yeah, but I mean, do you want that language added into the resolution on what you just went through?
Well, no, I don't mean to do that today. You're right, and so it would be asking, I suppose, for us to table it till next week and, and firm up maybe what language we'd like in there, but I do want discussion from the board. Maybe that's not the boards.
Deb, you got anything?
Maybe that's not the boards to say.
You were the one that.
I could, I could see adding, uh, and this was all triggered with, uh, with the issues at the Mental Health Institute in Independence. Uh, we've been drowning out here in the street, the officers. I mean, we just arrested a guy a couple weeks ago for domestic violence who we've dealt with many times before. He's known to have mental health issues. One time we dealt with him, he had a knife and he's chasing another guy around with a knife. We took the knife away from him. He batters a relative, assaults a relative, so we end up arresting him for, uh, domestic violence under Iowa's Domestic Violence Code. Uh, he goes to jail. Of course, the jail doesn't want him, because the guy, uh, has a mental, a severe, severe mental health illness. Uh, but what are we going to do with the guy? Uh, he goes to court, he sees the judge, the judge sends him home with the victim. And even before this happened, Officer Weber had been trying to find placement for this guy for weeks, trying to get him in a safer environment than where he was. While I was the police chief in Waterloo, we were involved in five officer-involved shootings. Two of them were mental health patients, uh, or, uh, people with mental health illnesses. Uh, they're both in prison now. Uh, so it shocks me. And the state is telling us these people shouldn't go to jail, but they're sending them to prison. Uh, the second guy that we shot, when I walked into the hospital room, the nurse asked him, "What's your name?", and he said he was Jesus Christ. The guy thought he was Jesus Christ, but he was looking for somebody named Vincent in a convenience store, and he was going to shoot Vincent. Thank God there was not a Vincent in that convenience store. As a matter of fact, one of our council members was in that convenience store and was one of our best witnesses. Uh, so when he got sent to prison, I was shocked. So, the state is telling us, listen, these people shouldn't go to jail. Yet, they're sending them to prison. Uh, they can't take care of their house in Independence, and they're telling me to be patient? I feel this resolution puts pressure on the state to keep pushing forward with the initiatives they claim they're going to provide, and funding is an issue. Uh, but this is the third state I've worked in as a law enforcement officer, and I was the worst out of the three of them in regard to issues like this. And we're having so many ins, we're having incident after incident after incident where citizens are losing their life either due to, uh, they're taking their own life, or we have mental health patients. And I don't want to stigmatize mental illness, because every, anybody, just because somebody has mental illness does not mean that they're violent. Uh, but time after time after time, we're, uh, people with mental illness are committing a homicide or severely injuring other people, and they've shown a propensity of violence before they committed the act. Uh, that happened in Ames with the pro golfer. Uh, she was beaten, uh, strangled, I believe, and stabbed. Uh, the pastor in Fort Dodge, uh, a mental, a person with mental illness who had been treated, beat the pastor to death. The last person we shot here in Waterloo, this guy we arrested for, uh, assaulting his relative, we're drowning on the street here, and I just feel like we're not getting the relief that's promised to us. Uh, we have, and we've had some bumps in the roads with the access center and with the detox center. I know one of the captains at the police department has been in frequent communication with both entities. They're trying to work them out, but, uh, more needs to be done. It's, it's, in my opinion, just getting ridiculous, and I want to keep pressure on the state.
So, as you mentioned, provide for training for law enforcement. Were you asking the state to provide that?
Yeah, and provide it in a, be more progressive. Uh, training was offered for officers, uh, and Waterloo, the Waterloo Police Department's a great example. When the police department is so short-staffed, we can't afford to send officers away for three days for training. We just, we can't do it. Well, how about online training? You know, look at how many universities, uh, to comply with their policies, offer training online. Uh, sexual harassment training for officers, I've found programs that we can offer it online. I, uh, there's got to be a more progressive way, because how, especially for our smaller departments in the state where there are only two or three officers on the department, they can't afford to send an officer down to Des Moines or just a training session off-site. Uh, let's be a little bit more progressive.
Maybe the funding part of it could still play into that piece as far as providing funding or assisting with funding for us.
Abs.
Each county could make their own unique decisions on what kind of training.
Absolutely. And I realize this is a complex problem.
I think it should be the same across the state, though.
Should be uniform.
Yeah, to make sure we we get that no one does dwell through the cracks. That's what we see every day when we have our monthly meetings for mental health. That's all we talk about is which what the shortcomings are. Unfortunately, some of the counties don't feel they have any problems, which they need to wake up to the real world and read some articles on what is what's going on in the real world.
Well, and that's why I want to attend some of those meetings and add conversations with Grant on individuals that I can talk to. I mean, in our own community here, when I can articulate actual situations that ended in tragedy, maybe that'll have an impression upon them. Because they in these small communities, they do have individuals that need help and need services. They just don't have as often because of their population isn't as great as ours. But they're there.
Blackhawk County for help.
Right.
There's definitely been a long time of mental health crisis in rural communities is December third will be the twelve year anniversary of the murder of a close friend of mine, Doug Lynseth, who in two thousand and six, early that spring, had just graduated from U N I as a talented young artist. As he was looking for a job, he had moved back to the family farm. But his older brother, who had battled schizophrenia, and his mother had tried and tried and tried to get help, had his pickup truck was talking to him and telling him that he was that Doug had been cheating with his with Mike's girlfriend. And Mike snuck up on him in the middle of the night and bludgeoned him to death in the head with a hammer. And you see, you know, a young twenty-four year old kid, full of talent and full of life, you know, died and taken from this world because we've been denying this mental health crisis for too long, and it exists in every community in the state. And so I think it's important that we pass some kind of a resolution today because there's some momentum behind this. I think some of the cities are looking at following suit. I don't I think it's we can try and perfect the language a little bit today, but I don't think we have to get it completely right, just to know that the just to call attention that we know that they're that they're they're making changes, but it's not enough, and it's not fast enough. And if you don't put your money where your mouth is, what they're doing is is not going to work.
Let's all our comments here today will go in the book under our minutes, so they will be documented. And they'll be attached to this resolution then. So you want to continue with the resolution rather than tabling it for a week?
I'd like to continue if we're okay with that.
And what was the the comment you like added?
The only the only one I wanted is just a whereas staffing shortfalls has led to unsafe conditions for staff and residents alike.
Yeah. So funding, as long as we could work funding into this somewhere, too, we'll be all right with that.
Do we have motion?
I don't think we have a motion.
Yeah, I think we did. We did earlier. Yes.
Okay, then. So we'll add that in here plus our minutes. We'll reflect our discussion today. And if we have to, we can revisit this again. So, okay, let's have a roll call on this, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item J is a resolution. The request for purchase capital equipment submitted by Kathy Nickless, county engineer, three thousand nine hundred dollars for a hot seat cleaning equipment from Denver, Iowa. Kathy?
Yeah, as this this would be considered a portion of the new Gilbertville shop building. We did budget four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the total package for this building. Approximately four hundred thousand dollars is to have the building built. And our architect suggested we include a contingency of about forty thousand dollars or thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we have some items that we we are purchasing ourselves, an air compressor, some shelving, a hot seat, a few other items, and those totaled up about twelve thousand dollars out of this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We we are at the point now where we're hopeful that the shop will be is nearing completion. We're hopeful that either right before Thanksgiving or the week following Thanksgiving that we will be able to move the mortar grader back into the shop and then the truck. We're we're placing a truck there, a snow a snowplow will now be housed there as well. We we, of course, use the hot seat. It's a it's a hot water, high pressure washing system. We use that to clean the equipment after it's been through a storm, for example. So we're we're thinking that we could start to utilize this piece of equipment as soon as we're in the building. So that's why we're we'd like to get a head start and purchase a few of these items that we did intend to in budget to purchase for the shop.
So all the bills aren't in yet on the on the building itself, is that correct?
Correct. But they do seem to be within.
So you feel that they're going to be down enough to allow for this purchase today?
Yes, they are. We did sign contracts with three of our contractors, and they they're all within the items of work that were said to be completed that was in the bill.
So what's that leave then approximately for the budget, saying the building comes in where it's supposed to be at?
So we're hoping that we still have most of the contingency left.
So do you have plans on spending that, or is that going to go back? Seems that it wasn't budgeted.
Right now, we don't have any plans to to spend the contingency.
Okay. Because that this money's coming from this was road use money and?
Correct.
So it just goes back to your account for road use?
Correct.
Board, any other questions?
We got any more of these, Kathy? Hot seats?
We have one at at the Longfellow shop.
What do we use in the past?
We've had a hot seat at Longfellow for a number.
Yeah, I understand that. But we never cleaned the equipment up in?
So in Gilbertville, in Gilbertville, there was no place to wash. It was just a two bay. I'm not sure about the drainage system in that that former shop, if we could do any washing there. That those vehicles, that mortar grader had to come to Longfellow to have a wash. So we're thinking about getting hot seats for Hudson and La Porte, maybe in the next fiscal year.
Board, is there any other questions?
So that means we won't see any dirty trucks.
I can't guarantee that. You know, these these the gravel roads, one hour into your drive on the gravel road system can.
But on a regular basis, are they going to be washed?
Absolutely.
I see too many of our trucks that know they're on a regular basis that are rusting away, that don't hardly get used. That's not good.
So we will make a better effort to get these trucks washed.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there anybody else get any questions, comments? Kathy, anything else?
No.
Okay, this is a resolution. Do we have motion on this one?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item K is a motion at the emergency closure of the bridge over the tributary to Miller Creek on Hess Road between East Shrock Road and East Quarry Road due to structural damage to be approached.
So moved.
Kathy, I think you sent the board a memo on this.
I did. This this bridge was posted and during during a routine bridge inspection last week, it was discovered that the timber piling was was in very poor condition. And the cap, the pile, the timber pile cap was was disintegrating, was in very poor condition as well. Ryan was worried that it would not continue to carry loads, so they immediately closed it. We did notify the the five one one system, the Iowa, the notifications we had to do to close it. And now we're asking for your official permission to close it. We did establish barricades last Friday. This portion of Hess Road has approximately thirty vehicles per day. No one is trapped. You can go either north or south of this structure. It it is in our five year plan for two thousand and twenty-one. It's quite likely that we can move it up to two thousand and twenty to actually complete it, replace it next summer. Do you want to add anything, Ryan?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, my error. We did not have a motion in second on that previous resolution for the equipment.
Okay, so you want to give me a?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Now, did we get a motion on this one?
Yes. Mr. White, my second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion carries. Grant, why don't you is this going to be a resolution?
Yes. The resolution is to certify the outcome of the votes cast in the November city school election held November fifth in accordance with Code of Iowa fifty twenty-four.
Second. Along with everything else you said earlier.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Grant?
No, sir.
Roll roll call, please.
We have the canvas to conduct them with the.
Oh.
Karen has some items for you to go.
Karen?
So all three of us are doing the same thing?
No. We're going to do the two different schools. We're just showing you what we have. So we have the Union School District, and then so you can see each race, the at large, and then all the different counties. And we should have all the different county abstracts. So we're just matching up the totals for each race.
So Union Director at Large?
Corey Lynn Brunson, thirty-four votes. Brandon Payne, thirty-four votes. It's Dennis Scott, thirty-four votes.
So these are, this is. Four races, and those are the director districts and all the counties.
Oh, here we go.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Could you record that since we have?
Yep.
So we just have the two counties and the two director districts.
Yes.
Director District one, and this is.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Three of two.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
We'll probably continue on.
Yep.
Yeah, because we're going to be here by ten because we got some problems.
Yes.
I'll take whatever needs signatures and make sure the rest of the board gets some.
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Do you have to say anything, Karen, or are we ready for the resolution, Grant?
I think we're ready for the resolution.
Roll call, please. We'll sign these as we go on, Board.
Pardon me?
I told Board we'll sign those.
Okay. Swart?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay. Item ten, work session. This is for discussion, possible service additions to the courthouse security request or proposal. Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Just want to thank you for allowing this to be back on the agenda with my absence last week. Reason I wanted to put this on as a work session is our existing contract with the courthouse security services is set to expire here at the end of the the year. And I wanted to bring to the Board's attention a few items that were brought up during our last security committee meeting get together. And it had to do with several topics, but one topic in particular pertaining to courthouse security and Pine Crest security. During that meeting, there is interest, sorry, I've got a bit of a cold, so bear with me. But during that meeting, interest was brought up concerning our other facility, Pine Crest facility, and looking at a guard to be placed at that facility. During this meeting, we called these roving officers. So for an example, the guard over at that facility would would not man a particular station like our guards do here, but instead just be available at that facility if a need did come up. It'd be easy accessible for a situation. That was one discussion that we had. The other discussion that was brought up was looking at armed patrol guards. And there's two thoughts here. One thought was outsourced, as our outsourced company as we have now, they do offer that service to provide armed guards. But I think what would be more of a in our better interest would be utilizing our sheriff's department across the street. And I think there's several different ways that we can look at doing this if the Board is interested. The problem that that lies here is this was not additional services was not budgeted. And so with this contract expiring here at the end of the year, again, it wasn't budgeted. So I wanted to throw a couple of thoughts to the Board. And one was to potentially increase the term of this existing contract that we're in now to give us time to look a little further into this for budget purposes. The existing RFP that we have or the existing contract does allow us to extend it for an additional three years per a mutually agreed upon cost and services. So we did have that option in the existing RFP. If the Board's interested in adding additional services, another option might be to just extend these services, negotiate with the existing contractor to the end of this physical year. Then at budget time, we could take a hard look at what types of additional services you think you might want and get a cost associated to that and take that back out for bid at the end of the physical year. So I think there's several different ways to slice this, but we just wanted to bring this in front of you, knowing that this contract is coming up at the end of the year, knowing that the security committee had some concerns and wanted to look at some things at this budget year.
How long has the current contract been in effect?
This will be our third year.
So it hasn't gone through the extension of the third year?
No.
Don't we normally roll it over if everything's all right?
We have in the past, yeah.
Did they talk about your committee? Did they talk about any funding sources?
No, that's why the committee suggested bringing it to the Board at budget time so we could talk about what those additional costs would be. Problem is with this contract expiring here at the end of the year, that just doesn't fit in with our timeline.
Have you had any conversations with the company about extending it?
I have not. I wanted to get some direction from the Board before I started those talks, if that was something that the Board is interested in.
What does the contract actually call for? Do we extend it for three years? Is there an increase in the contract or no?
It it actually states per mutually agreed upon services.
So there's not a set amount?
No.
And this current contract, if I recall, increased three percent from the last one?
The Board approved a three percent increase. Now, if you recall, last year at budget time, based on this existing contract that we have or the company that we're with, they recommend a closer to a ten percent increase based on what the services are in this area. So if the Board chooses to extend this and we go into negotiations, I can't tell you at this point what that would be.
Well, I'm, you know, I I my thought on it is whether I agree to support the extension is whether what they want for an increase, ten percent. We might be better off just to rebid it like we've done over the years. So when's the contract actually up?
Well, keep in mind on that 10%, that was just, last year, I had asked, what would you suggest or what is what would you recommend us looking at if we're gonna budget services? And that's what they gave us was a recommendation of 10%.
When's the contract up?
It's at the end of this year, December.
So why don't you check with them and ask if they want to roll it over?
Yep.
For another three years and what the increase would be and then the Board can make a logical decision whether they want to do that or put it out for RFP.
And then, yeah, and then at that time, that allows us at budget time, if there's any additional services that we wanted to add to that contract, that would allow us that time to discuss those services.
This services isn't new. It's come up a million times before since I've been here on a full-time deputy and the conclusion, I always heard it was a waste of resources of a full-time deputy to be in the sitting down there. And a roving one, I'm not too on that idea for the mere fact, you either got somebody there or you don't, because things can happen when a person isn't there and do you have any evidence over the last 10 years of problems out there that you feel that we need security out there?
At the, are you talking particularly about Pinecrest?
That's one you brought up, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, we actually, the committee actually was talking a roving guard for both the courthouse and Pinecrest. There's been a few situations at Pinecrest. In fact, we had one at the VA Department, oh, actually a couple at the VA Department where tensions got pretty high and if there were a roving guard, that would give them the opportunity to call someone directly there instead of waiting for law enforcement to show up.
Well, the.
Not a knock on law enforcement, they get there pretty quick, but this person would just be in that building.
The the security or the courthouse security contract is covered by the sheriff.
Yes, it is.
And therefore I think you need to include the sheriff in any talks on increasing that current contract, the percent they want to go and any other additional cost. Because after all, that's where the money's coming from. He should be part of the discussion. And maybe has, I don't know.
Yeah, there is representation from the sheriff's department on the Security Committee meeting.
Who is it?
Mark Herbst.
Okay, and anyway, that's, needs to be done with the sheriff because it's his money that's paying for that.
I guess I would propose if we were agreeable to just extend this to the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
So that we can, and then during the budget session have, you know, plug in some scenarios if something is possible. And then we have that option that we won't really know until we sit down and see what everything.
Is there a out clause in there now or is it just the three years? Because to do what you're doing, Chris, we not, contract may not allow that. It's either roll it over for three years or rebid it. Is there a 60-day out clause or?
There, I believe it's a 30-day out clause. That's pretty typical in most of our contracts. You know, and that's another thing that, that the key word is mutually agreed upon services. So if I were to approach our existing service provider and say, "Give us what your terms would be for an additional three years, but let's put a caveat in there about we may add additional services and give us the ability to do that."
Well, I think the first step is to decide whether we're going to extend it. For Chris, his idea was for the end of the fiscal year, which is another six months. I don't have a problem with that as long as I know what the, what they're gonna cost us. If they're gonna have a huge increase, then we're better off just go out for RFPs and be done with it.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the three-year, to extend the three-year, usually our contracts covers that third year, most of our contracts. I'm surprised we don't have something in there now.
What we have, again, what we have in there is we do reserve the right to extend it three years per a mutually.
But there's no dollar or no percent increase or anything.
And they did talk about the increase, so I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to extend anything, they'll still have something in it for an increase.
So we need to know that first and if it gives you more time to extend it for six months, but again, it all depends on what they're gonna charge you for them six months.
Yeah.
Why did, why did we wait so long anyway if we only got six weeks left for this contract?
That's typically when we take them out for bid.
I just think the process should have started last August or something. We have on our other contracts, we ran into trouble with the PDCM contract because we were told we couldn't get it done in time and we had to extend that a year. So I think, and I thought we had that discussion before where we were gonna start the process a little bit earlier than bringing it to the Board on a month before the contract's due. Because you don't even have time to RFP it now, do you?
I think, oh yeah, we could, we could still take it out and as I'd mentioned in an email to you, several different options. One option is to do nothing and take it out for bid as we do every three years. We still have that option. We still have time to do that. I think if there's any interest in adding additional services though, I think the best idea is to look at extending it out at least until the end of the fiscal year. So it gives us the opportunity at budget time to look at those services and to appropriately budget for it.
Well, you need to get that information from the Board so we can make that decision.
Yeah.
So sooner than later, like probably next week, maybe we can put it back on for discussion.
Yep, and that's.
House ball action.
That's exactly what we were trying to accomplish with the work session is just to get some direction. Because if, if nobody was interested in additional services, we would just take it out for bid as we normally would.
I assume since there were two supervisors on there, you are still interested in us pursuing, at least considering it?
Yes.
Who's on that? Chris?
Chris and Dan.
Yeah, and I see the benefits of a uniform presence of some sort of Pinecrest. I frequent that building regularly in a capacity as a citizen and it gets pretty heated with some customers over there. At least a uniformed officer, a uniformed presence of some sort of a common situation. And if this person has some sort of appropriate de-escalation training, they could de-escalate a situation, at least triage it and make a determination as to whether or not law enforcement is needed.
Could that be a cost that we shared Rory as well since DHS is out there and it's 50% of the building?
I, I think it would be because right now, what we do is we take all of our expenses for that building. DHS is right around, I think, 64%. So for an example, they pay 64% of any cost associated, for an example, utilities, maintenance services. I don't see any reason why security would not fall under that if DHS is welcoming of a.
That's another question you could get answered for the Board then.
Yeah, because it's, DHS hasn't specifically asked for this service.
Yeah, you can never have enough security, but at the same token, we really don't have it in the courthouse. They're not, they're just simply checkers with the machines and the tools we give them and that's it.
Yeah.
And parking lots, so.
It was primarily for the court system too.
Sure, and so it, and the same thing Pinecrest, you know, you probably could have it out there a lot over the years, but is it feasible? You know, is, should we have it in conservation? Is it feasible to have it out there or so forth? So I don't know, but anyway, you get some questions that you can bring back to the Board sooner than later. We can discuss which way we want to go. We're a little pushing up against the clock. I kind of wish we would have had this earlier, but.
Let's arm Yolanda.
Arm?
Well, arm Yolanda.
Yeah.
Uniforming.
So you bring that back to the Board then?
Yeah, we'll bring this next week and I think with regards to pushing it, I think we're, you know, we still have the opportunity to take it out for a public hearing. It's just we'll get the information to you and by next week.
You know, we've, we've, over a period of time, we've taken it out to bid, we've switched companies and we end up with the same employees anyway. I think one individual's been there since I've been here 15 years, so just kind of roll with the companies, whoever gets it over and so forth. So anyway, Board, if there's anything else you want Rory to bring back to you for information? We can make a decision on Chris's idea for six months or RFP it or maybe roll it for another three years depending on what they want for an increase, but I think 10% is a little high.
I will get back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, James has got a business thing here, the bond situation, is that correct James?
Yep.
You can go now if you want to. And was there anybody else going down there to that? Okay, you can go James. Last thing is, if you have any reports or information from the Board, then we'll do a recess until we do our bonds at one o'clock.
I'll just report, I went to the, I attended the annual Community AIDS Assistance Project Gala this weekend. And I think this is their 25th annual one, is really successful. They doubled their previous fundraising records which goes to support patients with HIV and AIDS with hospice services. Something that the, the county has a long history of getting involved in in the really initial stage. They took a really brave stance. Two supervisors, or I believe that those supervisors were defeated in an election in the late eighties when this was still a very controversial issue for folks, so that they were really in the forefront of standing up for these folks and that's something to be proud of as a county. But something additional to be proud of today is that the, they awarded the Black Hawk County Health Department with the Lifetime Achievement Award. So I congratulate the Health Department on their, their decades of work for helping patients with HIV and AIDS.
Very good.
As a tag on to that, we could congratulate Dr. Nafisa Iboni too for the Iowa Public Health Heroes Award.
Yep.
That she's going to receive and that was from the University of Iowa for promoting a healthier state and demonstrating value of public health, so that's, she's to be congratulated.
Dan, anything?
Nope.
Okay, then we're gonna go into recess at this time. It's 10:02 and we'll go back into meeting at 1:00 PM set. This time is one o'clock, so we're back in session and we're gonna be talking about a resolution dealing with the sale of bonds. Maggie, did you want to start out?
I will. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. I also have with me my colleague John Murphy. We were here today in the Treasurer's Office from 10:00 to 10:30 to watch the bids come in. As you can see, from today's results, you did receive, there were five bids received. We are recommending that we would sell to FHN Financial out of Memphis, Tennessee. Some of you may remember this, this bidder is FTN Financial it used to be. They've now merged with another company, so they are a bidder that we have seen in the past. Their original true interest rate was 1.6845, the revised is 1.6882. The reason for the revision is we were selling $9,990,000 worth of general obligation bonds, Series 2019. They were going to pay you a premium of approximately $108,000. The county is not doing any specific projects, you the Board of Supervisors, whether there would be building conservation, things like that. So it really was not necessary to keep the premium because we felt like each of the groups was getting the amount that they needed, that they had spoken for, that they had discussed as a group. So we were able to downsize the bonds, so the total par amount of the principal owed today is $8,935,000. So that's some significant savings just right there to everybody. If you flip past page one, we have included the Moody's rating report. We're very, very happy to see that the county has maintained its AA2 rating. It's a very good rating. Remember that's two notches from the top. There's the AA1 range and then there's the AAA range. We have done some highlighting in this to show you some different important factors. We want to always point out at the very bottom of page one that weakening of operating reserves is what could lead to a downgrade. We did have a very nice conversation with the folks at Moody's. They did recognize that your general fund balance grew significantly at the end of fiscal year 19 and that was due mostly in part to the sale of Countryview and those dollars coming into the general fund. It was also discussed on that call that there were a few projects that have been discussed to spend some of those dollars. But nothing, you know, nothing that we would say concrete going forward that is exact amounts at this point in time. But Moody's is aware that those types of dollars, those, that, you know, four million or attributable amount could be spent in the next few years. And so we want to make sure that even when I talk about the weakening of reserves, they do understand that that was a sale, that was not just regular revenues coming in from property taxes or anything else. We, it goes on and talks about the growth over the last five years, that you have grown at over 2% in valuation each of the last five years. Talks about having operating funds, major operating funds of 24 million or 41% of your operating revenue. And again, I know that's a little higher than you guys have had in the past and there's some reasons for that. But again, Moody's loves hash. Amortization is rapid with 100% of your outstanding debt. Principal scheduled to retire within 10 years. That's always something that they like to see. And this goes on then for a couple of pages where they talk about, in the very small print, why they are not held responsible for that rating that they have just assigned and given to you, so, you know, that, there you have it. So the, the last, or some of the last pages here, we've got your logo sort of for the county here. And this is where we talk about what the bids actually came in at. So as you can see, the FHN Financial bid, all the interest rates were 2%. We saw that from three of the bidders, the bottom two bidders were at 3% coupons today. Again, the original interest that you would pay over time would be on the far right column was the 1.6845 or the $609,152. It is now 1.6882. That's slightly higher just because you have less principal that you're basing that premium off of. And so that is now down to 602,438. So if each of the entities that you're issuing debt for today, just pay as they're normally scheduled to pay. That's the total interest between the two that would be paid is that 602 number. The very last page of, of the first part of our attachment is the final debt service schedule on $8,935,000. You can see the call period is after 6/1/2025 and it does look like those first five coupons are front-loaded. And we'll say that because that is the first five years, that's what the landfill commission will be paying off. And so they will be paying off in those first five years and then it levels itself out at the end with, really, that's just what's coming in from the communications. So the second attachment that we've provided you is a breakout schedule. What's important for me to share with Judy and John today is that if we look at that second lineup from the top, or I'm sorry, the second lineup from the bottom on this first page, they are getting in their project construction fund the amount of dollars that we told them they were getting. So even though there was a premium, even though we sized the bond issue down and used that premium, the landfill solid waste will still be getting $6 million. We told emergency management communications or the communications that they would be getting just about $2,600,000. They were gonna issue $3 million, take the cost of issuance. So now they're actually getting $2,963,000. So they're getting about $3,000 more for that project. And again, that's what led to that sizing down. We've included both of their final debt service schedules. We are about $30,000 off of where we were for the landfill, meaning we were at about 1.29 in a payment and now we're at about 1.26. So that's 30,000 less just based on today's interest rates versus where we were. We also were hoping to keep the, the communications at a billing of around $25,000 a month. It looks like on this schedule for those first about nine years that it is going to be right at about $23,000 a month. So, so that is, is everything that we could have hoped for today. So I would answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend to the Board that you had passed the resolution and award to FHN Financial at the revised interest rate of 1,600, I'm sorry, at 1.6882%.
John, you got any questions?
No sir.
The solid waste, nothing. Judy?
No sir, good, thank you.
Everything sounds good? It looks like it came out very well.
Very well.
Interest rate really surprised me. We've been lucky.
Good. We're very happy with it. We had a good sale yesterday for a client, very similar, same rating, about the same size and just a little bit longer than this and that came in at a 179. So as of yesterday morning, we thought we're gonna have a good week, so we're really happy with the results today, so.
Rory, any questions?
No.
So who's got an agenda with that resolution?
Let's see, right here.
I just need to read the.
Oh, I was gonna say, it's not quite there.
Okay, then, was there anything else? Maggie?
No, that is all.
Okay, we certainly want to thank you again Spear for what they do and John and been down that road before, solid waste, haven't we? Judy, I think everything worked out well for also for you guys on there.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, if there's no other questions or anything, we do have a resolution directing the sale of 9.99 million, $90,000 subject to adjustment per term of offering general GO bond, Series 2019.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further questions? Okay, with that, I'll accept a roll call. Okay, with that, I'll accept a roll call.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, with that action taken, is there anything else the Board wants, needs?
I was just wondering about the, the meeting tonight, whether we need to be concerned about.
Well, they didn't post it, Chris, so in all reality, we shouldn't have more than two people there.
Kathy mentioned she didn't even know how many people would actually show up, but they.
It's a, yeah, sometimes you get a lot and sometimes you can get hardly anybody. So, who plans, are you going, Chris?
I had planned on going. I'm unavailable. I'm unavailable.
We should be all right. Just keep an eye, just in case we all decide to go up.
All right, sounds good.
James, why don't you go monitor?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be right on.
Okay. With that, I'll accept motion to adjourn.